I was a, I was a party person. I am now independent. I like the independent. I like the independent. And basically at, at local government here in, in Ireland, regardless of you being a party person or not, there is no great difference with regard to how we work together on, on the council. The, the big difference and the only difference is who gets the positions.
Welcome to a very special edition of Cross Border Interviews International, the online show where we dive into the insights of municipal political leaders from around the globe. Our mission on the show is quite simple. Shine a light on the dedicated individuals who day in and day out work around the council table to shape the communities that we call home. And joining us for today's first episode of 2025 is Meath County councillor from the Republic of Ireland councillor Noel French. Meath is known as the royal county because many centuries ago aspiring high kings of Ireland came to the hill of Tara in the centre of the county of Meath to be crowned in elaborate kingship rituals. Tara is an important location in many Irish myths and legends. Meath was once the fifth province of Ireland called Mid, which incorporated what is now Westmeath and large parts of Cavan and Longford, stretching from the Shannon to the sea. Trimm Council is Ireland's largest Anglo-Norman castle. It is also the place where parts of the movie Braveheart was filmed. So stay tuned as we learn about what's going on in the Republic of Ireland municipally and how it is different from here in Canada. Across Canada, our cities, towns, villages and rural communities are alive with stories waiting to be told. Stories of innovation and economic development, resilience in the face of the housing challenges and the financial hurdles municipalities overcome every day. At the Cross Border Network, we bring these stories to life. From coast to coast to coast, we're connecting Canadians to the issues shaping our communities and showcasing the people working tirelessly to make them thrive. With your support, we can expand our reach, amplify more voices and shine a light on the challenges and triumphs of municipal life. For as little as $3.99 a month, you can help us grow and continue sharing the stories that matter most. Join us today and be part of this important mission. Together, we can tell more stories, build stronger communities and make a real difference. Support the Cross Border Network now. Visit www.crossborderinterviews.ca today. Councillor, I want to thank you so much for sitting down with me from all the way across the ocean and in the Republic of, Republic of Ireland and talking about yourself and the differences between what's going on in Ireland and what's going on here in Canada. So before we get into the differences and the challenges that are faced in Ireland around local governments, I wanted to talk about you for two seconds if you don't mind. And I want to start by asking you, where did your sense of duty to serve your community come from Noel?
The effective word there is community. I've always had a strong impetus to work and support people in the community and make a difference. I have, I'm working in the community now over 40 years. I don't think I ever even gone back to school years. I was involved in community organizations then as well. Yeah, it's, it's a nor during some sort of character characteristic that a lot of, a certain number of people share that we feel the urge to work and support for our community. And we, we, some of us do that free voluntarily. Some of us do it somewhat paid as when we're involved in, in politics. I'm not sure where that urge comes from, but there's, there is certainly that characteristic there. And it's something you can't stop. It's, I have, I have found it. I have seen it with people and they try and concentrate on their own private activities and they can't because they're drawn back into working with the community.
Working with the community is one thing, but getting involved in politics is a completely different beast in itself. What is the draw for yourself to get involved politically to give back to your community? Because you could have given back through nonprofits, through just volunteerism, but you chose politics. What was that about?
Look, it's, it's making a difference for people. That's, that is my main objective. And I was involved in a community for a long, long time. As I say, going back over 40 years before I got involved in politics. I only became involved directly in politics about 12, 13 years ago. I would have, I ran a community newsletter here in the town where I live in Trimm and it just focused on, on the town. And at that stage, we had local government for the town itself, a small town, five to 10,000 population. It would have had local government going back to 1194, 1194, eight, eight hundred years of it. And I would have attended those meetings and seen councillors trying to get stuff done there and reported each, each month on them. And I would have swore, no, I'm never going to become a councillor because it seems so difficult to get things done. And officials and officialdom seemed to do their own thing and they listened somewhat to the public, the people's representatives, but only somewhat. And I would have, I would have struggled with that and said, no, I don't want to get involved in politics. And I got an opportunity about, about 12 years ago to get an easy seat on the council. However, it, it didn't work out that way. I would have, I would have got co-opted onto the council here in Ireland. When a councillor retires or dies or gets into our national parliament, that creates a vacancy at local government structures. So we had a national government elected and a person who was involved in local government got elected to the national parliament and that created a vacancy. A local party, one of our political parties approached me to, to, to contest the nomination for replacement. However, the, another party, party candidate came forward and he defeated me. And that was my first taste of defeat. And it was, it was a knockback surely. But I had to decide then whether I was in it or not in it. And I decided I was in it. And about two years after that, we had local elections and I contested and won a seat on our local government. But that was a reformed local government. The, the town councils were abolished and we were part, we became part, the county councils were always there for our county area. So I got elected on to the council level.
Here, so there's a few things I want to unpack there. And I want to start by just something you just said. They were abolished, the, the town councils in favor of the county councils. Here in Canada, we often call municipal governments, local governments, the creatures of the province. In Ireland, do you find that the state or the country dictates what happens and the actions of what the municipalities and the local governments are doing?
Well, yeah, yes, because the national government makes loads of decisions. And, and like that decision in 2014 to abolish the town councils was not a very popular decision. It, it also impacted on participation in local democracy. Because at a town council level, you could get elected with maybe two or 300 votes and participate in local democracy. At the county council level, you're talking about having a bigger campaign, putting out much more money into, into a campaign. So it has cut out that lower, lower level of, of involvement. However, the town councils were not properly democratic either in that, as I say, Trims dated back to 1194. We were a long established town. There were bigger towns in our county that came along from, that were populated in the 60s, 70s and 80s that had no local government. But coming back to your point about the central power of the central government, yes, we, as councillors, as local government, we often feel that national government does not listen to us. It decides a lot of legislation without, without or with very limited consultation with regard to local government. At the moment, we have a bill that is in the process of going through, through central government, which will limit local government's involvement with regard to planning. That planning is one of our real powers as supposed real powers at local government levels. They are talking about extending our county development plans. We put together a plan for five years for local government for all sorts of things for not only housing, but for other facilities. They're talking about extending that now to 10 years. That's going to limit our involvement. So yeah, we have a very strong centralized system of, of, of government. National government decides a lot of things, even, even for us at local government. And we, there have been restrictions with regard to how a government has operated. At one stage, we, the local government had responsibility for water and waste supplies, water, waste water supplies. That is now centralized. Unfortunately, that has gone to not under central government, but to a quango, which means that local government, not central government control it. And we also at local government level, we had a certain amount of impact or influence with regard to our health services. That was done away with.
Can I ask a stupid question?
Sure.
I'm going to ask a very stupid question. What is the role of the local government then? Because it seems like it is very centralized in Ireland. And here in Canada, we are having that internal conflict right now as well, where we have provincial governments and even the federal government who wants to take their responsibilities away from local governments. But municipal governments and councillors and mayors and reeves are sort of speaking up and trying to stop that from happening. So in Ireland, what is the role of the municipal government?
When you see, what I would go back to is, is like what they pay lip service to and this idea of subsidiarity where decisions are made by the people who are directly affected by them. And that is, so our, our role, we have a role with regard to the provision of adequate housing, social housing. We have a role with regard to planning where housing goes. And we have a role with regard to the provision of services like roads, lighting, footpaths. We also then provide libraries. We are involved then in economic promotion at a county level, not an international level, but we do a little bit internationally as well. We would be promoting tourism. So that's where we would have a say. We, the, the idea would be that our officials come from all over the place. We have less and less say with regard to, we have actually probably no say really with regard to where our officials come from. That was because people, at one stage, local government and councillors had any, you know, would influence the selection of certain candidates that would be amenable to them. We've also been cut out to extent, to a certain extent because of planning irregularities. And we had a huge problem here in Ireland for, for a good number of years where councillors were taking bribes from developers in order for them, in order to secure planning. Because if you had an agricultural site on the edge of a town and it was zoned agriculture, agricultural, that meant that was worth maybe about 2,000 euros an acre. If you could get that rezoned for housing, that made it worth 10, 100,000 an acre. And we had a huge, huge controversy. And our system moves slow. Because of that controversy, we had a commission that inquired into that. That took about 20 years to report. So there is that impression still out there that there is corrupt politicians who are in it for, to, to make money for themselves. I would not see that that in our current crop of local government. That said, I have my suspicions with regard to just one, just one. But so, yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to know what our role is. Officially, our, our powers, we have a power to set a budget for our local, for our county. But if we don't, if we don't set that budget, that budget is prepared by the officials and given to us. But if we don't, if we reject that budget two or three times, the minister comes in and simply abolishes us. So we have no power there. Similarly, we have powers with regard to passing a county development plan. This is a plan which says where the county is going for the next five years. But similarly, when, and that was a hugely intensive process of work and we completed that during, during COVID. And we did have a certain amount of say with regard to that. And we did not necessarily go along with the officials on every issue there. But where we didn't go along with the officials, when people went in for planning where we had suggested planning and the officials had been against it, they found it very difficult to get planning. So we have limited, limited powers. We have a certain, I see myself in a lot of ways as being sort of a advocate for ordinary people. And sometimes they come up against bureaucracy, sometimes rightly, but sometimes wrongly, that they're refused stuff. And because they neither have the knowledge nor the contacts to move around that blockage, they come to people like me in local government. And that's where, where I come in.
I want to jump in there for a second as, as someone who comes into it. Because you are, you are an independent in the sense that you ran as an independent candidate. You got elected as an independent in the last general election. Here in Canada, the majority, and I say probably about 98% of our municipalities, our local governments in Canada are all independent candidates. There are a few with party politics, but the majority are independent candidates who get elected as independents to serve on council. Do you see, because in Alberta, where I'm recording this right now, we're going through this little internal battle where the provincial government, the, the middle tier government in our country wants to introduce party politics at the municipal level. Do you see a benefit of party politics as an independent councillor for your community that is better than independent councillors? Or do you, as an independent councillor, believe that the independent system is probably a better path forward for any municipality?
I, I was, I was a party person. I am now independent. I like the independent. I like the independent. And basically at, at local government here in, in Ireland, regardless of you being a party person or not, there is no great difference with regard to how we work together on, on the council. The, the big difference and the only difference is who gets the positions. And again, it's not all positions. It's the positions that pay. So when, and, and that is, that is the only, the only difference I can see. So
Would you ever go back, would you ever go back into party politics? Are you comfortable being an independent councillor now?
I, I'm very comfortable being an independent councillor. Would I go back? I, I don't, I, I see no benefit of, there is no benefit to me to improve what I can do for people by either being a party member or not being a party member. So, but coming back to your original question about independence, I love, I love the idea of having a total council made up of independents. I think, but as I say, that creates difficulties then when you come up with regards to, to positions. Who do you elect as mayor? We don't have directly elected mayors. We elect a chairperson for the council each year. And that comes from one of the, we have three groupings on our council. We have independents, we have one party and we have another party. Now, the two parties have got together this time. The last time the independents got together with one of the parties and they just slotted out. But we have a certain amount of de-hunt system whereby even if one group is pushed out, they still get a certain number of positions. But those positions, I, I've seen them and I don't, I don't like the, the chairperson of the council. They're there for a year. I have rarely seen them actually getting something of benefit for their community from being the chairperson. So I do like the idea of the independents. I've seen, I've seen them. And we do have occasionally have a bit of party politics played at local government. But by and large, most people say, you know, you know, they're bringing national politics into, into, into local government. We do have sort of an extreme nationalist party, which would say, which would be quite populist. And, you know, people don't tend to go along with what, what, what they want. And they tend to play the national car, the national issues. And so every year they put forward, you know, same, same sort of populist proposals. And they just got to get automatically voted down. However, those are the, the ones that make the newspapers, the media, the, the media, the media, the media has their role. And, you know, we are going down the role here in Ireland. You're probably the same where social media is ruling. Our, our local newspaper who covers and gives balance enough coverage to the activities. The, its circulation numbers are declining hugely massively. And so social media, and there are people on social media who are extremely, extremely nasty. So it's, and, and our national media then as well, viewerships are, viewers, numbers are going, going down. And so it's going to, like, at least with a local newspaper, you have some hope of a somewhat balanced viewpoint. But again, local newspapers are there for one reason. They're not there to represent the council. They're there to ensure that they have enough of a readership in order to continue. So you can't blame media for picking up on these lovely sensational stories, which a lot of people think, oh yeah, that makes sense. And that would, that's, that's the right thing to do. But we as local councillors can't do that because there are a whole lot of reasons why we can't do, do certain, certain things. But they sound lovely to the public. They sound common sense and all, all of that. So, but social media has got rough.
It sounds like it's similar in Canada. But there's a caveat that I want to talk about for a second because the role of the media does have a role to play in local government. But the media landscape in Canada at least, and I'm not sure in Ireland, and I want to get your opinion on it, has changed dramatically. 20 years ago, you would be hard pressed to not find a local reporter in every single one of the municipalities in Alberta. I, I know that because I was one of them. I was one of those people that had to go to each council meeting, each planning meeting and cover it. Now, the landscape of local government is we don't care about local government because there's nothing quote unquote, and I hate to use the word sexy about it. There's nothing that is engaging about it. There's nothing that is controversial about it unless there's a big planning issue. There's not much issues around it. In Ireland, do you get a sense that media is turning away because the sensationalization of and polarization of the central government is more newsworthy to the local reader?
No, we still have, we, we still have a local newspaper. But yes, I would, the I, I would, the, the local newspaper twenty years ago would have been the go-to place.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, even, even going back uh fifteen years ago, it would have been. Uh, uh, it would have come into almost every house in the county. Um, so that would have been, you know, twenty, thirty thousand. Uh, uh, maybe fifty thousand copies uh a week. And this was, this was a, a weekly. Uh, but yes, uh, coverage has declined. Uh, uh, again, uh, because, uh, uh, because. Uh, um, the powers of the, the, the local councils have been reduced. Um, there isn't anything sexy in it. There isn't anything newsworthy in it. Um, uh, uh, and, and, and I remember I, as I say, I covered uh, uh, local. Uh, the, our local council here. Uh, uh, for, uh, for my own local media, the community newsletter. And again, yes, I found myself uh putting in stories about this guy proposing. Uh, uh, a museum, a county museum for Trem. I knew he was going to do, do nothing about it. I knew he, he hadn't a single clue about it. But that made a good front page for me that week. Um, so yes. And I sometimes wonder about uh the press as well. Uh, you know, our, our uh county meetings go on for about four or five hours. Four or five hours. Now, how you can maintain consciousness. Never mind attention uh to uh, uh, a, a meeting which goes on for five hours. Uh, uh, you know, uh, unfortunately, I think some of our politicians love hearing their own voices and hearing their own opinions. Rather than, rather than making a difference. Yes, opinions and getting uh the widest possible opinions i- is valuable. Uh, but I too like to get things, like, like to get things done. Uh, one of the other things that, uh, again, media, uh, you know, I read a story. In uh, in, in our local newspaper there a while back. Uh, and because the local journalist wasn't involved in local politics, he was simply reporting on it. Uh, his view on what had happened was nothing like what actually happened. So, 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 you know, and, and that was no fault, that was no fault of his. He, but he didn't talk to somebody and ask, well, uh, what, what did that actually, actually, actually mean? Uh, the other thing we've had since COVID as well, uh, uh, is. Uh, we're now on Zoom. We had now have the possibility of uh attending meetings uh by Zoom. Now, for me, sometimes that is just brilliant because I don't want to sit there for four and a half hours. Uh, but if I, if I do have something on the agenda that I want to talk about or ask about. Um, then I will, I will go in in person, but Zoom has been of a benefit. But that said, as I'm not so sure whether Zoom is, is of a benefit. There is a lot to be said for being there in person. Uh, uh, and participating directly in uh, i- i- in uh the uh discussions. Uh, cause Zoom is not necessarily friendly with regard to. Uh, putting in stuff that's not on a, a, a meeting agenda, you know? So, uh, but often I, as I say, if I have something on the agenda, I will, I, I will go in. But, um, I, 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 there are a certain number of people that don't like Zoom a, 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 at all. Um, but when you have a four, four or five hour meeting and unfortunately these four or five hour meetings. Um, they're all about official business. Uh, but uh, very often I, they are reports or they are presentations. And the information is useful, but we could get that sent out to us in a report and have us read it. But then a lot of people get these reports sent out and they don't read them. So, anyway.
So, so I'm glad to hear that that's not different than in Canada because we have some councillors that I've, I, I, I know of. And I shouldn't say know of, but I've heard that they get their council packages that day and they go, oh, I didn't know this was on the agenda. And then they have to read it and go through it verbatim. We've talked about.
Absolutely. And, and go through it and question it. Uh, and, 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 and I, I have no, have, have no understand, you know. Uh, question stuff that's explained further down in the report. That they simply didn't, didn't read or because it has a buzzword in it. They decide to go off on that buzzword. And it has nothing to do with the actual report that we're discussing. But anyway.
The, the best thing I've ever heard was, I was covering a council meeting probably about ten years ago. And this, this, the one councillor hadn't read the report. And he said, he asked a question and the councillor sitting directly beside him stood up and said. If you read the next paragraph, it explains exactly the answer that you were trying to get to. And he looked at her and the, the vitriol that was, was sent through the eyes to that councillor. Was splendid.
Yes, but, but that is frustrating then for us who read the report. And we have to sit there and listen to these people vent about this issue or that issue. And it doesn't necessarily, uh, uh, it's not going to make any difference. Uh, 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 and, and they're just talking. Sorry.
No, so we, we talked about the role of media in uh local government in Ireland. But I want to talk about the role that people have because the role the media has is to tell the stories, which is great. But in my opinion, the role that the residents of each individual municipality, each individual local government. Is to be engaged, to learn, to explore what's going on in their local community. In Canada, I have seen after doing many of these interviews, that there is an apathy when it comes to local government. People just don't care anymore. Twenty years ago, when you saw those reporters in the council meetings, you would see about ten or fifteen people. Now it's hard pressed to find even two people who go to a council on a regular basis. In Ireland, do you get a sense that people just don't care anymore and they want you to solve it? You're the ones who've let, you are elected, so you solve the issue. Keep our taxes low, pick up our garbage when it needs to be picked up, and I'm okay.
Yeah, like forty percent uh, uh, of people don't vote in Ireland anymore, you know?
Last municipal elections in Canada, seventy-five percent of people didn't vote. Twenty-five percent of people voted in municipal elections in Ontario.
Wow, well, well, we get, we're, we're hitting at least. Uh, um, over fifty percent to sixty-five percent in most of our elections. And yes, it's appetite. They don't want, uh, uh, it's also a feeling of powerlessness. They don't feel that they have any power or any say. Uh, with regard to, to, to what happens. And, and yes, uh, uh, I, again. Part of that is, i- i- is modern society. Um, you know, when you have uh, people here in this area, you're getting up at six AM in the morning. Heading to Dublin for work. Uh, back at seven or eight PM at night, maybe picking up small children, maybe not picking up small children, picking up bigger children. Uh, um, and that going on for five, five days a week. Uh, Saturday then is generally children's activities days. Sundays, if you're lucky, you'll get uh your shopping done. Uh, so, uh, people are busy, busy, busy. Uh, so that's part of it, that's part of it as well. Uh, um, and part of it is, uh, you know, uh, unless there is a crisis. People aren't going to get involved. And uh, by and large, you know, they may not like a rates hike for, for, for. Or, or an increase in property tax. Uh, but, um, uh, if it's not huge, uh, then it's of no great, of no great matter. Um, uh, and, and the way, um, our politics, political system operates now is. You know, there aren't any huge major, major changes. You know, we have a budget in October, November each year. Uh, but uh, by the time uh we get to October, November for the budget. Everybody knows what's going to be in it because various politicians are leaking it left, right, uh, 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 and centre. Um, so yeah, it's. People's activities within the community have changed as well, you know? There are less and less people getting involved uh in uh community organizations. Um, and, and that is a struggle. Uh, uh, again, you know, we've, we've had a number of scandals with regard to. Uh, uh, some community organizations where, you know, somebody robbed a whole lot of money out of them and so on. And we've had a, a massive reaction from central government then. To put in such an amount of legislation that local community groups have to weed through. That uh, in order to get uh your legal responsibilities done. Uh, that's a huge job of work besides trying to do the work your community organization was established to do. Uh, uh, so, and, and insurance, the risks that are involved with regard, people have become more. Uh, uh, aware of uh legalities and taking people to court and taking community groups to court. Uh, um, uh, they, they, and I, 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 I see a huge decline. Uh, in uh people involved in community. Part of that is going back to the first uh bit of that answer, people are just too busy. They don't have time anymore to get involved, to get involved uh i- i- in community. I'm, uh, and, and there has been a huge shift. Uh, in, in uh my county council with regard to supporting community organizations. They have started really to support community organizations. Uh, maybe too late, but uh, um, uh, the, the community organizations. I support every single one. Uh, some of them have ideas that I might necessarily think are a priority. But because they come from the community, I'm going to support them. Full stop because, uh, you know, I could say, well, you know, maybe you should be concentrating on this rather, rather than, rather than. Rather than that. Uh, but that's the one that they've chosen to do. So that's the one I will support them doing.
Okay, so I, I want to pick up on something you talked about a little bit earlier and that's social media. Here in Canada, we are seeing a rise in abuse towards local governments. Through social media, whether that be hate, vitriol, uh, anger, frustration, you name it. It seems like it's growing exponentially on social media. And in return, that is causing the good ones to leave the role of local government. Resign, leave, depart, not run for office, not even want to get in office. Do you see the rise of social media as being a double-edged sword? Because you can get a great information on social media, but the dub, the, the other edge of the sword is. People can say whatever they want and they can say it anonymously to your face and get away with it. Do you see the rise of abuse hurting local government and the good councillors like yourself getting involved?
Oh, app, app, a- absolutely horrible, horrible, horrible stuff. And unfortunately, the most vocal are those people who have access to Grindr or whatever. Um, uh, it, it's, it's horrible. I, 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 I am only on Facebook. I don't, I don't do any other uh social media. But I have about five thousand followers on my Facebook and I can post anything uh I like. But if I post into the community ones for this town or for one of the other towns that I serve. Uh, I, I never know what sort of result I'm going to get. Um, a- a- and, and sometimes they're off the wall. Sometimes they're pure nasty. And there are a number of uh people that I know. Uh, and once I see their thing going up, it's pure, pure nasty. Uh, it's so difficult to answer them because I, I've tried to go back and answer them on, on, on stuff. And no, they'll come back with some skewball thing that will still cast you in a bad light. And you're not going to, you're not going to win with them. Uh, now, I, I'm, I'm lucky in, 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 in a lot of, 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 of my social media. In that, uh, uh, because I, I do the work and, and I do the job. Uh, uh, people will come in and they will, uh, um, say, that's not fair. Noel is doing his best here. You know, so I have a number of supporters, but by and large, those don't want to get involved either. Because they don't want to draw these trolls down on top of them. So, uh, there is a, a huge uh number of, like out of my five thousand. There may be only twenty of those actually posting stuff on it. They are watching, they are getting the information. That's where they're getting the local information now, you see. The newspapers are gone, the radios are gone. Uh, uh, so, uh, they're getting their local information from uh social media. So, I, I have to target my social media to that, uh, to. Uh, to that media system as well in that there's no point in me posting up. Well, our commercial rates didn't go up this year, our property tax didn't go up this year. Vast majority of people aren't interested in that, you know? If we're trying to get a, a, a new road or a, a, um, a, a new community facilities. Like a playground or something like that, yes, people are interested i- i- in that. But as you go back to your expression, it has to be sexy information. There's no point, there's, there is no point in. Uh, uh, like we're going through a, a weather problem. It's not huge at the moment. But I, I see the vast majority of my colleagues on the council all posting up about this weather event. And there's a weather warning for ice on the road for, for, for the next four or five days. Uh, I, I don't post that up because if they're listening to any media. Then people will already know that themselves. I'm not going to add to their information. So, and, and the benefit as well of doing my job is I can get away with issuing. Bad news, uh, as well as good news. In that if something uh, uh, bad happens. Uh, I can pass that information on. It's just news. I don't get personalized with it. It's not, it's not me that has done it. I am just passing on uh, uh, information to, to people. Uh, whereas I see other politicians, they can't get away with that because. Uh, uh, they're only coming on here and there and they're not doing the job.
Before I let you go, we, we've talked about a lot of stuff in forty-five minutes. But I want to talk about the future for a brief second because municipal local governments are at a crossroads right now. We have central governments taking away powers. We have the online social media. We have voter apathy. Do you have hope that local governments, municipalities, even in Ireland? And even across the world will be able to survive this sort of nexus that we're at right now? This crossroads of a lot of challenges and a lot of people just not wanting to do the work because. You look at municipal governments right now and people aren't raising their hands to get involved. And that is leaving you, your administration, to do all the work. Do you have hope for the future?
Uh, uh, yeah, uh, yes, I do. Uh, um, yes, you're absolutely right. The number, like even for our national government. The number of people putting forward uh their names to, to run there are getting limited. Uh, 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 as, as, as well. I, I would like to think that there is. Uh, because, uh, as, uh, uh, as I started out, I see my role as helping people. And I think ordinary people still need help. Uh, I think ordinary people's viewpoints need to be represented. Um, uh, will we, will we have a change? Um, uh, will we, will we have a change? I don't know. Um, as I say, uh, uh, Trem had a town council from eleven ninety-four till twenty fourteen. Uh, and now, now we don't. Um, things will, things will change again. Um, uh, you know, it's hard, it's hard, it's hard to know uh, what, what, what changes are, are, are going to, to, to come down the, the line. Um, you know, we are in a global uh, economy. We are in a global, uh, uh, a global society. Um, so, um, things have changed massively over the last uh, uh, fifty years. I mentioned global, the global thing and before I go, um, I've been into Ukraine three times to, to uh, uh, support relief efforts uh, there. And uh, talking about global uh, uh, impacts. Uh, you know, we are a one world uh, society now. And anything that happens in the US, we're, we're going to have huge impacts over the next four years with, with uh, with, uh, with Trump. Uh, things travel, happening uh, thousands of miles away on uh, uh, the eastern borders of Europe with Russia and uh, Ukraine uh, are going to have uh, uh, an impact on us as a, a world as well. And uh, so, uh, we, a local group here in, in Trem uh, organized uh, some vehicles and uh, medical supplies and humanitarian aid uh, to go out uh, to Ukraine shortly after the Russians invaded Ukraine. And uh, they have run uh, seven more convoys uh, out to, to uh, Ukraine. So, and I have participated in three of those. We take out uh, Jeeps, four wheel drives and ambulances packed with uh, humanitarian aid. Now, the vast majority of uh, the people who elect me couldn't give a fiddle about Ukraine. But I do, and uh, I see it as a, a danger for our world. It has had impacts here on, in Ireland economically. The prices of our goods and everything have gone up because of Ukraine. I see, uh, going back to, uh, to your, your, your question about democracy. I see that it has a danger to our democracy. So, uh, uh, despite the fact that, as I say, vast majority of people uh, uh, in my constituency couldn't give a fiddle about Ukraine or Ukraine is a negative because uh, we've, we've accommodated so many Ukrainians in Ireland. Uh, I will still take, take a stand. And I think that's part of what uh, uh, we in local government can do. We can take stands and we can, uh, we, you know, again, like I was very active with regard to climate change. Uh, when I got, first got elected on, onto the council, that was two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. And at that time, I got shot down with all my climate action proposals. Ten years later, they're implementing every single one of them, you know? Uh, they're not giving me credit to say that I put forward those ideas ten years ago, but they're implementing every one of them.
The best thing I ever learned about local government is you always steal from the best without giving credit to them.
Ab- absolutely. And, and yes, uh, that's why it's, it's good to have interaction with other uh, o- other groups uh, from uh, across our borders and so on. And yes, one of the comforting things is to, to hear that we're all facing much the same difficulties and problems and, and, and frustrations. Uh, uh, so, uh, that, that makes me at least content that, uh, you know, I'm not wrong. That there's other people that feel the same frustrations.
Noel councillor, I want to thank you so much for sitting down with me this morning. And I, I never know what I'm going to get out of these interviews. And I'm so honored that you were able to take time out of your day to sit down with a podcast host from Canada and talk about local governments and the difference in the differences and sounds like similarities between our two great countries. So thank you so much for doing this.
You're, you're, you're quite welcome. I, I, I did another one for uh, somebody in New Brunswick. Uh, uh, so, and, um, our town, uh, uh, was privileged to be part of Communities in Blue uh, internationally. Uh, and uh, we were just last year awarded uh, gold medal in that. So, a- a- and, and the people of Trem and the people of municipal, uh, the, the county council were so delighted uh, to go to Prince Edward Island and receive that award.
Prince Edward Island is a beautiful land and I, I can't wait to go visit. But I can't wait to visit Trem as well. I, I'm, I pledge on this show that I, if you come on the show, I come to your community. So this year or next year, one or the other, I'm coming to Trem. So let's have a coffee, let's have a Guinness and let's sit down and we'll, we'll continue this conversation.
Ab- absolutely. And Trem is just a marvelous medieval town. We have history going back eight hundred years. Nothing like, but you know, so, uh, absolutely. And Trem's motto, which got abolished, uh, when we lost our town council, was always welcome to visitor.
Thank you so much for tuning in for our very first episode of twenty twenty-five. Now, we hope you've enjoyed today's conversation and gained some valuable insights of what's been going on in the Republic of Ireland. To stay in the loop with all of our latest episodes, don't forget to subscribe to the show on your favorite platform and follow us on social media. For even more content and to learn more about the stories and people we feature on this show, visit us online at crossborderinterviews.ca. Your support means the world to us. So share this episode with your friends and community members to help us keep the conversation going. Until next time, stay informed, stay engaged, and we'll be back on Wednesday with a brand new episode of Cross Border Interviews. Till then, everyone.